I want to call the meeting to order at 7:03. Tenants this evening, we have Mr. Dunn, Mr. Mann, Steve, Mr. Curtin, Taylor, Mr. Bova, and we do anticipate Ms. Vancy and Ms. Mercy will show up a little bit later and have some more to give us. So with that, please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
... from the United States of America, and to the Father, who is your saints, one nation, on the ground, in this world, with the victory of justice.
Thank you. So we got a special request from our student council at Columbia High School, Katie and Ryan, to come in person, so we want to welcome them to the board meetings. Been here a long time, so great for you to join us. The camera is behind you, and you have the mic, you have the floor.
Thank you for having us. To get started, the junior class game night on the turf is 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. next Thursday at 17:00. All juniors are invited to register through the signup genius link that was emailed earlier this week. Also, the NHS induction for the senior class will be June 22 at 7:00, and will be livestreamed by the website for any family and friends and staff that would like to watch.
First off, it's so nice to see everyone in person. Thank you for having us. This is also like the first week, we have a lot of updates, so that's exciting. So the Columbia Award Ceremony is completely filmed now, and it's going to be on the website, and I think there's going to be a link sent out next Wednesday, the 16th, so that's very exciting. Everyone's looking forward to that. And NHS tapping started earlier this week, so for anyone that doesn't know what that is, basically, all of the students that were inducted, the senior class gets to tap the junior class, and we dress them up in funny outfits. I had the honor of tapping Brian, he was all decked out. So if anyone sees people running around in weird outfits this week, that's why. Then we also had elections this week. They end tonight at midnight, which, we have a lot of people running, so that's exciting, and it'll be a good start to the next school year. And all the other positions are going to be announced tomorrow morning at 8:00, but now I can officially introduce your next student council president, Ryan Seeley. And then just last but not least, we'd like to thank all of you for always giving us support and a platform to kind of share what's going on. And that's all from us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We just want to say we appreciate all the time and effort that you put into coming to the board meetings, it's a big commitment, student council is a big commitment. Want to congratulate you, Ryan, and Katie for a wonderful job this year. I think just wish you much success in your next endeavors beyond college, and we'll see you at graduation. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next topic on our agenda is the approval of the draft minutes for May 26th. At that meeting Kathleen and Deanna were not present, but we still have a quorum of five of us. Is there any revisions or changes in the minutes? Seeing none, a motion to approve the minutes for May 26th. Joanne, second. John, all those in favor? All those abstaining? Approved. Next, we move to our first board forum of the night. As we have indicated in all our meetings, we have both a board forum and a public forum at the beginning of the meeting, and then we also have the board forum and public forum at the end of the meeting. I will start on my right with Frank, do you have anything? Good, thank you. Joanne?
I'd just like to congratulate Audra Tabapo on her PDPA Teacher of the Year. I've worked with her personally with the Food for Families program, and she is just so dedicated to our students and families, very well deserved for board. And thank you and congratulations to our student council advisors.
Thank you, Joanne. Kathleen? Deanna? Mark? Good. And John? Good. And as I am. So we move to the public forum. As we have during the whole pandemic, we have an email system set up for the public to provide comments. I will read the public contents, blurb that we have. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Greenbush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and our operations in addition, other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns through the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting to state for the record their name, address, or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon the free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitors forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory, or stupidizing, or prohibitive, may be declared out of order. So as we have in the past, we have an email, like I said, set up for comments. Additionally, we have comments on the draft plan for the federal monies that was put out there as well, and our director of business, Linda Weyer, will be the one to read out those emails. So just make sure, please, Linda, that they identify themselves in the beginning of who they are, and then you can continue reading.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Buno. We have several comments tonight. The first is from Susan Albin. She says, Dear Board of Ed and District Administrators, thank you for the opportunity to submit public comment for how American Rescue Plan funds should be allocated at the district level. I believe that school districts are going to continue to face challenges for how to address the academic, social, and emotional fallout from the pandemic. Because ARP funds can be used for students, social, emotional, and health, and academic needs, efforts that address these areas for all staff and students, is essential if schools are going to be fully reopened. Behavior scientists recognize the impact of a pandemic as an, quote, adverse childhood experience, end quote, or ACIS, that that can and does cause trauma in children. Couple that with efforts, effects, and pandemic has had on families such as food insecurity, unemployment, compromised health, loss, and lack of family support structures, to name a few, and a child's ACIS score is compounded further impacting our students. The result seen on students has been unprecedented levels of social and emotional issues. Anxiety, oppositional defiance, learning loss, grief, depression, inappropriate social skills, lack of self-esteem are just some of the concerns teachers are witnessing. While state legislation is proposed for more mental health professionals in schools, districts can't count on this immediate funding source. Measures that build a district's capacity by all stakeholders, administrators, building principals, teachers, students, and the community become the necessary means to address need. With that being said, and since ARP money is nonrecurring, initiatives that foster schoolwide conditions that promote social and emotional practices and equity for all should be considered. According to CASEL, the National SEL Organization, SEL is a strategy for systemic improvement, not just an intervention for at-risk students. To this end, initiatives that promote collaborative problem solving and shared best practices for addressing need can be transformative. Release time to allow teachers and stakeholders to meet and develop intervention plans to decrease overburden schools-based social workers and psychologists is a solution when addressing maladaptive behavior students are exhibiting. Funds allocated to allow schools to develop sustainable professional learning communities, vision and planning statements that are reflective of best practices around social and emotional development can decrease stress and support all stakeholders across the board with successfully educating our students, our school students, excuse me. These are numerous resources, such as the CASEL Guide to Schoolwide SEL to coordinate and build upon SEL practices and programs for reimagining to happen and long-term solutions developed. I implore the Board of Ed to consider such tools for the overall well-being of staff and students to overcome what still lies ahead.
That was from Susan?
Yes.
And Susan has done some work in this, correct, Jeff? Under that same area, so thank you for those comments. I know we do have some funding available for that.
Our next comment is from Natalie Mulligan. Good afternoon, I do not support D2 of having a district-wide nurse. The amount of money they will be paid would be better spent giving the current nurses within the buildings an assistant or offering them training for COVID. Our nursing staff know our children, love our children, and our children have a love and trust for the nurses and assistants already within the district. These other people that have patched wounds, helped a nervous belly, and knew when a child wasn't feeling well, these are our people. As the mother of a child with multiple health issues, I have relied on a specific nurse over the last four years for my child's health and safety while away from me, and she has done a phenomenal job of knowing my child and looking out for his best interest. A district-wide nurse will not and cannot do that. I know every nurse and the assistants within the district are just as wonderful as the Belltop School Nurse, and there's no need to pay a nurse three times what the current nurses make, another nurse is unnecessary. The COVID cases amongst our youngest students is a very small number. The transition rate is low and their symptoms are mild based on nationwide data collected over the last 15 months. With staff being immunized at a high rate, I don't see a need to pay a COVID nurse, and think this is, I think this money would be better spent supporting our dedicated staff nurses that already work for East Greenbush School District. Quite frankly, I'd buy you the slap in the face to the nurses that work for the district.
So thank you for the comments. I think when we get to the discussion phase of our, the federal monies around staffing and the needs for the staffing, we'll be able to address some of the questions that were posed in that email. Thank you.
The next comment is from Amanda Peace. In response to the email about the COVID-19 funds, I would like to add some input. As we still deal with the ongoing pandemic, I think we should have the nurses be able to implement rapid tests. It is a huge burden on parents to have to leave work or take time to get their child or children tested for something as minor as a headache. I think the district should invest in rapid kits or machines for nurses to do that at schools. This would be a huge relief to parents. As we still are uncertain if this will still be the protocol in the fall, it would certainly help if it is.
I think as we get the reopening guidance, we should send the opening of the fall guidance from SED and Department of Health, we'll be able to make a determination about going to that.
Just to add to what Mr. Buno was saying, we have been having that discussion within the superintendent's group with Questar and Craig Hansen, and talking about the potential to have a point-of-care testing program. We don't know whether that would be required or not, but we also, in addition to our district funds, county has funds, and so we're talking about how that program might work. You have a situation where a student comes to the nurse's office, it's symptomatic, could be their fall allergies or their spring allergies, instead of having them have to go get a COVID test, this instruction, and/or have to go to a doctor to get a different diagnosis. We might be able to do a point-of-care rapid test right there, isolate the child, and if it comes back negative, send them back to class. We are discussing that very issue within the Rensselaer County Schools, and actually on Questar Districts, as a potential program for the fall.
Thank you. The next comment is from L. Delano. Air conditioning, air quality control for all schools.
It is an item that we're going to talk about later on under discussion items, and it is an item that we've identified as a recommendation within our use of the federal funds.
Next comment is from Steve Mermando. I'd suggest considering an improved air filtration system, including MACI. Air filtration will help on several fronts, our terms viral transmission, et cetera. I know it's a relatively small percentage of the school year, and it's hot for the students and teachers, but why should that matter?
Can you just address that, just to talk about that? Same comment.
The next comment is from Jennifer Bayer, and she suggests giving up credit in school taxes rather than using the funds to buy anything.
So Linda's the business person?
I don't believe that that is a permissible use of the funds. Funds are to provide for the full return of students, provide the academic, emotional support, and the air quality, and the other issues that need to be addressed as the kids return. So we're not permitted by use of those funds to decrease the proposed tax levy. I would also remind everyone that we did before the budget to the community that was overwhelmingly passed and included a 0% tax increase.
Thank you. The next comment is from Brittany Nudson. Regarding COVID relief funds, good, our schools deserve it, and there is no better investment than our children's education. The district needs every dime of that money. I say propose that plan and best of luck.
Thank you for coming.
Next comment is from Victoria Barrett. I've included in this message an email I sent a while back after the summer enrichment program emails were sent. Given that there is a discussion now of the appropriation of funds for COVID relief to benefit students within the district, I would like to present the issue of limited access to summer enrichment and resources for children of working parents, and to have this issue looked into as possible use of just a small amount of the funds. My children, as with many others, have fallen behind and are suffering academically and mentally as a result. I strongly feel the district will be doing a disservice to children of working parents who rely on summer programs to provide care for our children on a daily basis if they are not provided the resources or assistance to access summer care, regardless if we fall within a category of financial need. We work extremely hard in order not to fall within such category, such category by both parents working 50-plus hours a week to provide some financial stability for our family, and it seems that by not extending a bus route to allow those children that are at local camps during the day to provide them with the same opportunity for summer school, enrichment is negligible by the district. Upon reviewing the proposed plan that was sent, I am in full support of the extended hours around the school day during the school year for kids that are academically struggling. This would be an invaluable and much-needed service. My children attend GCC daily for before and after school and historically do not receive much assistance or encouragement with their work, so extra time with actual educators would be incredible. I also feel strongly that increasing mental health counseling throughout the school would be pivotal. I have struggled for the last several months trying to get my daughter in for mental health services and still have not been able to secure a position for her anywhere. It would be wonderful to have increased services in school so she could have someone she could meet with at school on a regular basis. When I was growing up, I had those services available at my school, and it was a game-changer for me. Unfortunately, it seems the counselors at the school have the time to present issue teachers, I'm sorry. Unfortunately, it seems the counselors at the school have the time to present issues teachers are seeing to parents, but haven't been able to take enough time to actually spend with my child to determine what could be going on and try to work through things. I appreciate the opportunity to voice my beliefs, opinions, and suggestions. If there's any further input I can provide as a parent of these, let me know.
Thanks for coming, Jeff.
I want to respond to that comment because many of the recommendations and suggestions that were made are included within our ideas right now. The first issue was making sure that students had full programming over the summer. While our current proposal for summer school enrichment at the KA level includes a five-day-a-week program, the students are going to be released around 11:30. This week, we started the process of communicating with GCC, the town of East Greenbush, and have not yet, but we've talked about reaching out to the YMCA so that those programs might be coordinated with the district. We already provide busing, Temple to the Town Park program. We will continue to do that to those programs, so the transportation is being arranged so kids could go right from the summer enrichment program to any one of those three sites. We haven't finalized all the details of that yet, or had enough of a conversation with those agencies, but we're planning it and designing it so that the kids would have a full day and the parents would be able to go to work. The other point I want to make is we learned a lot about the need for childcare during the course of the last 15 or 16 months, and we have identified an area where we want to have conversations with childcare providers about how we might be able to facilitate a connection between childcare programs and our programs that we're running to potentially provide some funding, because childcare is identified in these federal legislations as an area that we can address. So we're working on that, we don't have all the details, but those are areas that we want recognized that people are going to have to work full days in the summer, and we want to have our students enriched with activities and well-supervised. The third point was on the mental health, which is critical. We have been having conversations with Rensselaer County Commissioner of Mental Health, Kathy Coons. We have formally requested the placement of a school-based mental health clinic within the district. At this point, it's being planned for golf and middle school. School-based mental health clinics have been proven to be successful because students and parents can have access to those services right at the school. Our counselors in the district and our social workers in the district do address individual and group needs of students, however, generally that focus is on academic counseling, issues that may be interfering in a child's academic progress. In some cases, as we identify children who need fourth and what the school can provide, a school-based mental health clinic would prevent some of the delays in referrals, the cancellations of appointments, and those kinds of things, because it can be offered right there within the school. And while we are planning to locate it at golf, we also recognize that there may be children in other schools that need to be served by that, and will arrange the busing with parent permission. So we're working on a model of school-based mental health clinics that will generally be funded through the county because those services are medicated, reversible in many instances.
Thank you. Our next comment is from Jeremy Bolum, who is the parent of a sixth grader and second grader. Dear members of the board, thank you for the ability to comment on the use of federal funds. I would like to suggest some of the funding we use to help move forward with the school's start time initiative that lost momentum prior to COVID. I feel personally, and hear from many others, that something needs to change with the East Greenbush schools having their earliest start times for middle school and high school in the capital region. It seems so much healthier for those students to be starting later. I'm not sure how additional funds could or would help, but I think it should be given some thought and priority. Thank you again for the opportunity to comment. Next comment is from Anne Oomla. Regarding the district's request for public comment on the additional use of federal funds, after reviewing the proposed three-year plan for strategic use of federal monies, I noticed there was minimal focus on the kids' physical, mental health. I would propose that we figure out how to extend the hours of a few support staff, like lunch or playground aides, so that we can get a second recess scheduled for kids. Children should have more than 20-minute recesses a day, as stated and supported by a multitude of research, which has been corroborated over years. I emailed all of this research to the Board of Education months ago for consideration for the upcoming school year. At a minimum, one additional recess per day could easily be added. Growing up, we all had morning and afternoon recess. Time to bring that back. It's a low-cost option with a highly beneficial impact for our children. The American Academy of Pediatrics has repeatedly stated the needs for kids to reconnect socially and have unstructured time with peers to help recover from the stress and emotional impact of the COVID pandemic. Could we please add that in for consideration?
That is an issue that Mr. Buno and I have talked about as a policy issue, and given all of the different demands that have been going on this year, it is something that we plan to get some feedback from our building principals on, see whether or not there are some options, and study it. Let me bring it to the Policy Committee or the Education Committee.
Thank you. The next comment is from Elise Yell. I think these Greenbush schools should implement a summer program with these funds similar to what the district is doing this summer. It should be for all summers going forward, and it should be enrichment as well as remedial classes. It would be nice to have it in both July and August. It could be half-days for the week or full-days, half of the week. This would lessen the burden on parents for childcare during the summer, and it would give students an opportunity to get extra help to advance. High school students could take some extracurricular classes during the summer to get them out of the way for the school year. I think this would be a positive addition to East Greenbush schools and would attract young families to the district. It would have to be marketed correctly as enrichment and remedial to get rid of the stereotypical summer school connotations.
So one of the things I think we can remember when we look at the federal funding is the sustainability of programmatic decisions that we make regarding those funds, like, for example, pre-K, and then making sure that if we can sustain those, that can be supported those from a budgetary standpoint. That's really a big consideration, because that has a huge impact on our budget, and it's something that we can consider, but we appreciate the fact that, you know, it is a need, and we're trying to do some things in the next couple of years with the funding we have, and we'll have to focus sustainability.
Thank you. The next comment is from Sarah Howard. Hello, here are some additional ideas for the use of the funds. Put solar panels on the roofs of the schools. This will decrease energy expenditures in the future. Invest in electric school buses, which reduces air pollution and gas costs. Bethlehem is in the process of doing this, and she included a link. And also invest in ways that we can start the high school later in the day, for example, with more buses or whatever is needed. Our final comment at this time is from James Wilson. Spending is already way too high. Schools should have been open full-time long ago, as well as the parents given choice to send children or do remote. No need for additional spending. Put the kids first, not politics and self-interest.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you to the committee for responding to the comments, and we made some notes and responded in kind to some of those comments, and we'll be hearing and discussing the issue of the federal funding shortly. With that, I want to turn over to Mr. Simons for presentations of the support schools.
Yes, at this time, I'd like to talk a little bit about, I just lost my, lost my place. Wanted to mention that the board had received a presentation from Mr. McHugh and information regarding the professional development plan. We are going to invite Mr. McHugh to give an overview of that and then have him ask the board to adopt that.
Give it up.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else to say?
No, I was on the wrong meeting. I apologize. That's why I was hedging. I was on the wrong meeting day. I got logged out. So I apologize. Mr. McHugh? So in regards to professional development for the 2021-22 school year, just to walk people through, this is an annual requirement that needs to be accomplished each year. Some requirements, assurances, and consideration. Collaboration, meaning that your PD, you have to have a standing professional development committee. It has to have stakeholders from all of our bargaining units and representative of all of our buildings. We have 33 members participate in our We have 33 members participate in our professional development committee this year. We had four meetings during the year. The focus on improving student performance and teacher practice, our professional development should be continuous and sustained, and I point that out because what you will see in the professional development plan is that there are things that have been in that plan for several years, meaning, for example, curriculum mapping. Curriculum mapping is ongoing. It's never finished, and it's part of that professional development. So some things appear in there each year. What happened to my right-hand man here?
Sorry, I got some input that they weren't able to see the screen, and I'm trying to get that on the.
PD plan has to be annually updated and adopted at a public meeting by the Board of Education. The professional development should be differentiated, varied, and embedded, and that's another important point, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. But differentiated, meaning that some folks have had professional development, and they need it a little deeper, and some people need that initial presentation of some of that professional development. So the activities are planned by the district should complement additional trainings that faculty and staff can pursue with their own. That's some positive data that I'm going to share in a second. Our district-wide professional development days are September 2nd. It's a full day.
Sorry.
Remember who does your evaluation, Mr. Goodwin.
I'm going to reach out right there now.
October 1st is a half a day. November 2nd is a full day. March 25th is a half a day. So the half-days are problematic because we have five different bell schedules, so it's hard to organize anything district-wide. If you bring in some sort of presenter, district-wide, it's really difficult to do that. You have contractual start time, contractual end time. There are a lot of needs, and it's hard to hit all of those needs when you have two days of professional development and two half-days. So you must address the onboarding of new hires, mentoring program, repeated trainings, and updates. For example, we use Fanta Supedel in the elementary schools, and we benchmark our students, and it had been years since we had any training. So we started this current school year out with an updated VAS kit so that we could assess students, and one day our K-2 faculty, all teachers got trained, and the next day our 3-3-5 teachers were trained. Additional considerations. Principal, one of the blueprint English language learners. So if your population is 5% or greater in your district, you need 15% of your professional development to be really earmarked and targeted for English language learners. We do that. Our English language learners population is 1.8%, so we're exempt from that. But our teachers have the responsibility to accrue 100 hours of professional development every five years. That percentage is going up rapidly, so teachers need to be cognizant of that fact. But there's a lot of building initiatives, outstanding building initiatives where teachers are trained. For example, Janay Elementary School is our EML cluster school. Mr. Grignot's used Arburn to bring presenters in for faculty meetings into that building. So it's not one of the professional development days, but yet we are accruing those hours. Many components listed included within our plan, we talked about that, you're going to see all the time. So they're already in place. When we talk about data teams, they're in place, but representatives within those data teams change annually, so that professional development is ongoing. Character education, curriculum mapping, they're just a couple of examples. So they need to be maintained in order for faculty and staff to accrue CTE hours. So if it's not in that plan that's attached, then teachers can't get CTE approved credit. I could always file an addendum. So if we brought in a presenter based on a need that surfaced during the school year, I could file an addendum and change that professional development plan. But in order to get CTE credit, it's got to be in that plan. Faculty and staff shall maintain a record of completed CTE, which will include the title of the program, number of hours completed. You know, our EML such records are retained for at least three years. They control that. Teachers keep track of that. MLP doesn't for our employees, but teachers have to upload that to be recertified. Modern school teacher this year, I just threw that up there because I've got some real positive data. So crazy school year when you think about the challenges that we all face and what a teacher's daily work looked like, and our support staff, our teaching assistants. Yet, from July 1st, 2020 to May 25th, there were 3,851 requests to attend professional development sessions. So just think about that. 2,784 professional development sessions were completed as of May 25th. 700 professional development sessions are still in progress, meaning that they're scheduled for sometime in June, or teachers just didn't submit their final verification that they completed that professional development. You know, on September 2nd and September 3rd, just to give you an example, those were two days that were used for professional development to start off the school year. There were 50 different sessions offered to staff and faculty. So that's tremendous amount of planning, tremendous initiative by all professional learning communities. These have really become popular, and I didn't know how they would go, but the participation was unbelievable. You know, our teachers soaked that time, and they were reading, you know, some sort of professional literature. They were meeting on a regular basis to talk about that. Even if we had to meet virtually, participation was up in that format. So there are some things that were really evident in professional development that we should leverage in the future moving forward. So, you know, those Google meets and those Zooms, the increased participation. Technology takeaways, the virtual Zooms, we just talked about that. The asynchronous training that Mr. Goodwin facilitated, very well-received, and teachers could take advantage of that professional development at a time that worked for them, whether they had young children, they needed to get them fed, and need to get them in bed, and then engage in that professional development. That was a really popular thing that we will continue and will work to enhance. Overall, there was an increase of 142 professional development sessions that our staff and faculty participated in. This is just a sampling, and I'm not going to read through it. You had time to look at it, but this is just a sampling of some of the sessions that were attended during the school year. You see a lot of technology, right? And Peter does a really good job of monitoring usage to see what folks are using. We know which ones should stay around. They were beneficial to teachers. They were beneficial to students. Through our participation in Resseller Club A and Green, BOSIS, they have Otis, a platform that will be free to our district next year. That'll be a professional development tool for our families. So our families, if their child's using Seesaw app and they're not really familiar with it, that platform that'll be provided to us from BOSIS, parents could access it and actually take professional development and learn how to use that app. So that's another thing that will help next year. A couple of other things I do want to mention. Power teacher training. When we went to standard-based reporting in K-1, same thing with 2-3 for next year, there were teacher training that was provided by Marie Chieco, one of our teachers, and Todd Witherall from our data department. So we had that training through Power School, Power School Pro Training, teachers using an upgraded, newer platform for their grade books, state assessments. You know, I talked about the interactive strategies approached, early literacy 11 sessions, we talked about that. 33 hours of professional development, 32 teachers participated in that. That's going to be sustained again for next year. We have a little, we're working on a plan to keep that initiative going. And then you see, you see a lot of, you know, standard-based stuff, so critical concepts in math and ELA, and you see the mental health ones as well. We had a virtual session on self-care towards the end of March. It was optional. We had almost 100 participants in it. So it just shows that there is a need and an interest. 2020-21 identified priorities. We don't have any. They should be, they should be on there. There we go. There we go. No more priorities. It's been a busy year. We want to leverage the increased understanding of the value of technology to support teaching and learning. We want to maximize the tasks that can be accomplished through the use of technology. So what a great opportunity. I know it was a challenging and exhausting school year, but we really see how technology helps to support that, and some of those things should definitely stick around in the years ahead. Rethinking assessment, this became even more apparent this year. You know, when you have students in a hybrid format, some students are home, remote, you have students that are full remote, where do you get, keep that academic integrity? And how do you assess students fairly when somebody's sitting home, possibly with another device with them while they're taking that assessment? So we have to move away from traditional kinds of assessment, more portfolios type things, more product-oriented, that students are demonstrating that they have acquired that knowledge and they can actually apply that knowledge. So that's, that's going to be something that we really need to focus on next year. And again, we're going to continue with that partnership with the University of Albany's Literacy Teaching and Learning Department. Or I'm sorry, those are our priorities last, this current year. Going on to next year again, that ongoing curriculum work, the K-12 technology integration, that's really going to be important. And then a big emphasis on meeting the social, emotional, and cultural needs of all students. So we talked about really understanding, having developing culture competencies and talking about cultural bias, but also on the other end, we are very aware of the increased need for social, emotional supports as well. So attending to the whole child and the students we serve, kind of like the airplane thing about put your oxygen mask on yourself before you try to help other people, we need to make sure we're taking care of our stakeholders as well, so that they're energized and they're excited to engage in, in teaching and learning. That's it. Any questions?
Questions or comments for Jim?
I'd like to set a comment. Jim, thank you.
Welcome.
We navigated through the technology on that.
Right.
I liked what you said about how we're basically taking this experience and trying to learn from it, because I think this is what we've said all along, is a great opportunity for us as we move forward. And one of the things, we've maximized the use of technology through this time period, but not that we need any more tasks. I think it would be really interesting to see what does the technology show us as far as the data at the end of the year? What did we do well? What could we have done better and where we failed so that we can shape the next school year? I mean, we have a lot of work ahead of us, but I think by using and embracing the technology and what it's telling us, and I'm not talking about, you know, the standards and all that stuff, but just the overall health of the district, I think would be a good barometer for that, be that we have that. And I was really happy to see the resiliency training. So I think one of the things that has happened in this experience, we've, as a group, we've become less resilient to what's going on around us, and I think the children, there's a lot of anxiety, the mask and not the mask, do we do this, do we don't do that? The conflicting messaging that's been coming from our government has created a lot of these types of scenarios. So I really thank you for really digging in the weeds and, because it's going to be a lot of work, but I think that the resiliency and working together with our stakeholders is going to be a key component to getting these kids back on track. So again, thank you for the hard work.
Thanks, John. Any more comments?
I just had a quick comment. I want to thank Jim and the team for working on the plan. We learned quite a bit, did a lot of resources. I think number two, in terms of the K-12 technology, it's really about, there are so many things offered during this period of time. It's about consistency, implementation, and making sure that across the grade levels, we see that every teacher and every student has the opportunity to engage in same technology and access to resources, and it's really good plan. Also, a lot of these things too, this is, the PD plan is focused more on educators, administrators, but really it applies, you know, paraprofessional support set, everyone can benefit from the priorities identified, professional opportunities that are put in place next year. I think the self-directed learning, excellent for people on their own time if they can. And then just the number of sheer offerings is tremendous to see that there is something for everyone. So when we, when we hear comments about, well, it doesn't apply to me, looking at the numbers, there's got to be something that applies to everybody. I think anyone can benefit from taking advantage of the amount of resources put into professional development in this district. I think it's tremendous, tremendous to see. Thank you to you and the team for the work.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, Mr. McHugh and the professional development committee have done an excellent job over the last few years of not only identifying workshops and activities in professional development, but really doing a comprehensive job of needs assessment. And I want to thank Mr. McHugh and all the teachers and staff that are involved in that finding process because it's really been very effective at supporting success of the students. Come a long way in our PD approach, and I appreciate it, John.
Any final comments for one of the agenda?
So the next discussion item is a big one for us about the district plan for the use of the CRR SA Act and American Rescue Plan Funds. What I'd like to do is, there's two documents posted on Board Docs. Mr. Simons, can you interrupt that? And we can ask a comment for the board. And also, we could get a quick few comments from the public. I'm sure there's some areas you want to touch base on, based on those comments in the work review.
There are two documents. One is a template that we use as part of our strategic planning process that aligns the goals of the board with major initiatives and ensures that we have ways to measure how we spend money on programs and initiatives that are intended to improve student achievement, make sure that our community is engaged in our district, ensure health and safety, and make sure that we continue to develop community partnerships. So what we did in that document is we took some of the categories that were permissible under both the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan Funds and aligned those. The other template is easier to utilize, so I'll utilize that to speak from because it's been put together in a more succinct manner. I want to thank my central office team for putting this information together. Before I go too far in explaining some of the rationale for the specific initiatives, I just want to publicly state some information that I've shared with the board and our administrators regarding some of the parameters for this money. These monies are available to the district, one case until 2023, and another case until 2024. Honestly, I don't remember which one is which. If you do, Linda, chime in.
Elise, the Carisza funds are valid through 2023, and the American Rescue is 2024.
However, based on consultation with state organizations as well as with Questar State A Planning, which is a statewide service, we can present one unified plan. And that's what we're hoping to do so that we prevent overlap, we prevent redundancy, and we create one plan and we make that plan available for our stakeholders to see. When we submit the budget documents that are required by the state for their review, we submit those budgets separately. However, I'll use a very simple example. If you have $100,000 expenditure that fits within both grants, you could hypothetically divide that up into $50,000 coming from one of the sources and $50,000 from another source. So we see an advantage of doing one plan and making sure that we, you know, certainly comply with all of the filing requirements. In the case of one of the grants, we have applied for an extension today. Linda, do you want to speak to that? Because we want to have sufficient time for the board to review and to have our stakeholders input into this process. In fact, I'm very encouraged by the number of public comments that we received tonight regarding this. So we did apply for an extension today. We haven't received an answer on that, and other districts have told me that it's an easy process, and they've got an email back right away.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. The coronavirus response and relief supplemental appropriations act, it's the Carisza Act, that is the application that is due on June 15th. Our allocation, it totals $3,959,472. So I did apply today for an extension, and So I did apply today for an extension and that will give us an extension through July 15th. I have not respond, I have not received confirmation on that.
The other, the American Rescue Act, we have not been informed of any deadline as of, as of meeting I had Monday.
We do not have a deadline and there is no current application for it.
So the state has yet to enable us to apply for those plans. So we have some time for this.
Linda, can you just repeat it now?
The total amount is three million, nine hundred fifty-nine thousand, four seventy-two.
That's just the one grant?
Yes, that's just the.
So it's there, okay.
And the American Rescue Plan monies, do you have that handy? There was around another four million.
It's another three million, but I, I'll look for it.
Okay. Very good. So these monies are available to spend on programs, initiatives that will address the impact of COVID-19 on our students. They are available for academic support, improvements to services for social, emotional wellness, which has been spoken about in our public comment. Mental health, student engagement, air quality, facilities issues that will improve the overall health of the building climates. And a number of other permissible categories. We have heard this year from many of our parents at elementary school level that they are worried about the academic progress of their students, particularly in reading and math. We've created a summer program which will enable us to address some of that need. But as students are coming back in September, and again, we hope we're full in personal learning and I would expect that that will happen. We want to be able to support student success in making accelerated growth in reading and mathematics. Other districts, along with our district, are looking at a model that would phase in additional teaching positions at the kindergarten through third grade level to provide in addition to their classroom structure that they are receiving targeted interventions in reading and math. Measured by district adopted screening tools and utilizing some of the practices that U Albany is training our teachers in, among others. So we don't know at this point whether it will be 10 positions as identified on the document and we're still having conversations. Other districts are considering this as well, reducing student teacher ratio. Identifying the reading and math levels as the kids are coming back in September, providing targeted instruction to those kids, which is in addition to the reading and math instruction that they receive in the classroom. The number that we use, eighty-two thousand, is reflective of a salary along with benefits. And the step that you used for that, Linda, was?
Step three.
Assuming step three. It was a teacher with three years' experience plus their benefits. And we, I believe we used family, cost of family benefits. Correct?
That is correct. The estimate of eighty-two thousand dollars is the twenty-one, twenty-two, step three salary for a teacher, fifty-one thousand, sixty-eight dollars. Plus FICA, plus TRS, plus health insurance estimated at twenty-one thousand. That comes out to be eighty-two thousand.
Doesn't necessarily mean that everyone that we hire will be paid eighty-two thousand dollars. It doesn't mean that we'll necessarily have ten positions. It's a budgeted item and when we budget, we, we estimate high so that you know what the potential of, of that spending might be. The district currently has screening tools as part of our response to intervention program. Response to intervention is a required program by the state to make sure that we are doing everything possible to help students make academic progress before we refer them to special education. Required to go through various tiers of intervention and provide support. We don't currently have a screening tool for mathematics. And the current reading screening tools that we utilize are time intensive. They're individual, you have full individual kids out of class. It can take as much as two to three weeks to assess a full class. We want to provide something that is quicker, still gives us the kind of data. The whole class can take the assessment at the same time. And Mr. McHugh has ten plans in the works for this Renaissance screening tool. That is a permissible expense because it gives us the, the ability to be able to identify the children, their reading progress, their math progress, and do it in a consistent, uniform manner. Can you have anything to add on that?
Probably the most important thing to add to that is that with our current screening tool, we spend ten weeks out of a forty-week school year assessing students. And that's unacceptable. We want to spend more time teaching students and less time assessing students. This tool, in all reality, could, we could assess our students in the area of reading in one day. Next day, we could do math. The third day, we could catch the kids that maybe we didn't catch on one of those days and then work. And the data is instant and it's available to our teachers. So it's gonna, it's gonna allow us to actually get our faculty in the classrooms working with kids.
And Mr. McHugh and some others have been participating in some sessions to learn about medicines this year. Try to be as thorough as I can, but as efficient as I can. The Extending Learning Resource Center, we have a program at the high school right now where kids can go for extra support. It's problematic that they can't go every period. The Learning Resource Lab is not open every period for students to get help. So in some cases, kids can go at lunch, but because of staffing, it's not open every period. The additional teaching assistant that's being recommended for ELA and the one for MAB would enable that room to be open for kids to get academic support during a study hall, for example, or during their lunch, or during a period in which they're permitted to go. That's embedded support within the school schedule. Additionally, we want to, you know that the district has been monitoring its number of students that are failing two or more subjects. Historically, global history is one of the most difficult courses for our students. And looking at that data, we see that the numbers indicate that in order to provide a targeted program over the next few years to deal with the number of students that are struggling in ninth grade, it's a two-year course. Moving into 10th grade, we need a point two social studies teacher to schedule that in. That is the area where we're finding higher numbers of kids right now in our freshman class that are performing low in global. Jim, do you have any more information on that?
That's the other value of the data, right? We know which regions exam our students are struggling with and we're being responsive to that.
The AIS positions that we've identified should look very similar to you. They were the positions that we included in the general fund budget. We're going to recommend utilizing the money that we have available in federal resources to support those positions. That will save general fund money that can be real, either reallocated next year and it will fall into fund balance. And that will be part of our sustainability in this area. Not spend the general fund money, utilize it, save it, spend it for next year as part of the sustainability. So we get at least two years out of resources that have been identified for AIS. Extended aid program, currently we don't have a formal after-school program for kids at the elementary and middle school level, although many teachers do stay after to provide support. We have childcare after school. We don't necessarily have academic support for homework help, English Language Arts, or mathematics. Many districts that are higher in needs than us have qualified for after-school grants, such as the Twenty First Century Grant. We have not. So we want to have conversations with our teachers union about how we staff that program. Do they stay after school? Get help in reading, get help in math, maybe they do an interest club. Maybe they learn about a craft, for example, or something that they want to do that's fun. Maybe there's a wellness component to it, with some exercise, it's fitness, it's nutrition. We currently have rates within our contract that we believe apply, but we're having discussions with the teachers union on Tuesday about this. So we base our budget on that. We also want to make sure that the program is uniform across the five elementary schools that we're collecting data on participation. So we may recommend a stipend for somebody to coordinate that after school. Project Adventure, items number seven, eight, nine, and 10 are really about student engagement. We know that through this experience with the pandemic, many of our students, particularly those students that have been economically disadvantaged, may have experienced significant social, emotional issues during his time. Are demonstrating chronic absenteeism because they're not necessarily attending either remotely or in person. We want to have opportunities for those kids to reengage in school and find ways to, to want to come to school. Right? In some cases, a child will come to school because there's that one program, there's that one teacher, there's that one activity and they can't wait to get her because they like doing. Project Adventure is a program that many of our PE teachers aren't familiar with. It's ropes courses, it's outdoor activities, it's team building, trust building activities that can either be incorporated into PE class or in an after-school program. It's out of SUNY Cortland, I believe. It's been around for a long time. And we just, we have it as an idea. We haven't necessarily costed out expenditures related to it. Three years ago, one of our teachers invited me to go to the Nassau Sportsman's Club and I tried trap shooting. He obviously would be one of the teachers that's retiring this year, but we're going to try and see what we can do about giving him a mouth. I actually did hit the ski. That, that's what it's called. John, is that what it's called? What's the thing called that goes into the air?
Play pigeon.
Play pigeon. And it's five tries. However, they wanted to start a program. And they felt that this type of a program, we draw students who may not be participating in some of our other activities. It is a state, there is a statewide organization that provides guidance on how to do this. It is a safe activity that requires the kids to be trained, supervised. Research has shown that it does not promote violence, use of guns. It is an activity, it's a sportsman activity that engages all of our kids. So we'd like to explore that. We talked about Green Bush Childcare and looking at what we might be able to do with work, to work with them to provide full-day programming, particularly before and after-school childcare, maybe provide some resources to that. Junior ROTC. I have a lot of experience with watching junior ROTC impact kids. In my prior district, Rome City Schools, because of an affiliation with an Air Force base, officers of the Air Force brought to the district's administration the idea of an ROTC program. It was a program that started slow, but eventually engaged a hundred and fifty children who participated. Some students who needed a sense of purpose, some students who needed to feel like they belonged to a part of a group. Teaching leadership skills, aerospace science, other types of field trips. Cyber security is a part of it. There's a cyber competition that happens every year. And again, it'll be another way to have a different type of program to engage kids. This particular program involves instruction and courses that are credit-bearing. And also after-school activities and community service. So it's something, I asked Mark Mann if he had any contacts. And he's going to arrange something for us to talk with somebody who he knows, who does this, I think it's connected to the school. Okay, and I think it's worth exploring. Seen students that were in my elementary school when I was a principal that I never would believe would be who they were when they graduated. I went on to college, I went on to careers, you know, necessarily have to go into the military, get part of the junior ROTC program and it does teach you life skills. Mental health, this is an area that everyone is concerned about. I talked about the clinic that the county will put in place at Goff Middle School. We sent a formal letter requesting it. There is some coordination work that would be, need to be done to arrange the schedule for kids. And we are looking at a stipend for one of our social workers to help with that process. Looking at the student schedule, for example, when can they have an appointment? Making sure that they get to the appointment and helping with that process. We also are trying to identify a universal screening tool, not only for reading and math, but for social, emotional wellness and mental health. And Jim and Molly McGrath have identified four or five different options that we're looking at. Additionally, we recognize employee mental health and wellness is a key priority throughout we've gone through. Our EAP program is, is something that we have in place. We support that with these funds. Marsha, you had shared some information with me today about next year and honestly, I don't remember what you told me.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. For next year, it's actually a rollover contract, so we will see no price increase. So it would be the same cost as it is this current school year.
A while back, it's my understanding that we did have an equine program in East Green Bush, taking the students out and learning positive relationships, benefits of working with animals. There is research that's been done that these types of programs really help kids. And it's their mental health as well as build self-esteem. Believe that Andrea Neiman, among other teachers, has been involved in that in years past. They have not been able to do that. And we want to support that program with at least four sessions per year, three times over the next three years. Further work to be done on that. We've talked about the need for looking at our alternative programs. One of the things that Mr. McHugh said a couple of weeks ago was our, our high graduation rate of ninety-seven percent largely part is due to the support programs that we have for alternative education and the quality of our special education programs. CTOP, CTOP is a program that is intended to provide programs for kids that may have school-related phobia or anxiety regarding coming to school or other issues where they're academically successful, but coming to school in a large school environment is intimidating. We want to explore moving that down to the eighth grade. We're still having discussions of that. To do that, we may have to hire an additional teacher and there'll be some technology associated with that. Additionally, we may impact space at Janay and we're talking about how that may or may not occur. We, in order to support it, and there are students in that program in grades nine through 12, depending on the number of students that we identify, we want to make sure that we have certified teachers providing the core curriculum, science, ELA, math. We are estimating we might need an additional teacher in those areas, at least in science for the eighth grade. And we also want to increase school psychologist support to, if we can. One of the things I have said within our administrative team regarding alternative programs is while I fully support their success, I want to make sure that we have within each of our alternative programs, the opportunity for kids to transition back into the regular environment. I don't want to see us as we're moving down to eighth grade, moving kids into an alternative program such as CTOP and not giving them opportunities to demonstrate resiliency to, to be in a normal setting. So we're still talking about how that might work. We do transition students back into high school from CTOP. So we just want to make sure that we're not just putting kids into that program and not giving them the exposure that they need to be resilient and to be successful. Even if they are anxious, there's, there's the whole emphasis on coping skills. Food for families, our athletic department, along with Audrey DeBaco, who was our Teacher of the Year, among many other volunteers, including Joanne Taylor, who's here with us right now, have been very successful. One of the concerns that was brought to my attention by Joanne was we're not sure that, we know that the need is there, but we're not sure that the coordination and the word is getting out. We're worried that we're not serving certain families. In fact, Jennifer brought that up to me too in a recent phone conversation. So we want to support this idea of providing for both the community-based program and the backpack program by giving someone a stipend to help facilitate. the backpack program by giving someone a stipend to help facilitate, make sure they're doing the outreach. Folks that we have doing this right now already have more than full-time responsibilities. MAP has been talked about for grade six since I've been here. MAP is the middle school alternative program. In order to support that, kids are receiving instruction. The teachers generally move to the kids. We need point six elementary teacher to teach ELA and social studies and informational literacy. We need a point four FTE for math and science. We want to add a guidance counselor. Just want to remind folks that additional guidance counselor and an additional social worker have shown up the last four years on the requests that have come from the administrators. We haven't been able to provide both the social worker and the counselor. We added the social worker, but we have, we have not added the counseling piece as we're, there is a significant coordination about on the part of the counselor, and we're also looking at a stipend for the additional counselor that is not on this list, it was a request from the principal, and a teaching assistant for grade six and a half. Response to intervention. One of the things that we want to ensure can happen is that we're coordinating our RTI program. Right now, Mr. McHugh does it, among a thousand other things. And not able to get to the level of data analysis that is essential for effectively evaluating the program. We are going to propose a teacher on assignment, help him with that process, to interact with reading teachers, with our RTI committee, with our special education teachers as well. This is not something that we have done, a teacher on special assignment here in the district. We're going to discuss it with the union. We want, we don't want to incur the full-time cost of an administrator to do this. So one of the reasons we came to the conclusion of a teacher on assignment, teacher would come out of the classroom if they were interested, they would do this work, and then they would have rights to return to the classroom once the program was either in good shape, or we didn't need the money, or we didn't have the money anymore. And again, this is part of identifying the kids, the interventions that they need, coordinating it in a district-wide manner. Additional teaching assistants has been mentioned by members of our staff and community. Recent public meeting we had regarding reopening, the idea of teaching assistants being not only key to help kids with academics, but with emotional support. There are shifts that occur in teaching assistant assignments as kids age up or graduate. In some ways, we are able to shift the teaching assistants in special education to meet those needs, but as kids are coming back and needing more individual and group support, we would like to employ additional teaching assistants primarily at the elementary level. Item number two on the staffing has been a subject of discussion and public comment tonight. We've also received some feedback from the staff. This is a position that I think is misunderstood and miscommunicated right now, and I'll own the miscommunication because it has evolved, okay? And it is still evolving. Over the course of this year, our nurses have done an extraordinary job of absorbing some of the additional work associated with screening for health symptoms and managing that whole process related to COVID-19. Additionally, we hired a full-time COVID coordinator to meet all of the obligations for contact tracing, as well as to advise the district and work as a liaison with the county department of health, administration, and our nurses. That preserved our nurses to be able to focus on kids and regular work that needed to be done in each of the schools with support from the COVID coordinator. We don't know exactly what the regulations are going to be in September, so we started discussions about whether or not we would need a full-time COVID coordinator. The answer is, we don't necessarily have to have a full-time COVID coordinator, but we believe that some level of support will still be needed for, by our end, for COVID-related Our COVID coordinator also provides me and Marissa with data-heavy report every day. Currently, the COVID coordinator works evenings and weekends as part of her position. So the COVID coordination piece will likely be less, but still be there. Additionally, last month, we received an email from our health services coordinator, our nurse at the high school who also handles health services coordination, indicating that she had reviewed the grant and that it was a permissible expense to hire additional nurse support for schools. Would we, would we consider hiring an additional nurse position and deploying that nurse in such a way that that nurse could rotate on a daily basis, be assigned to each of the schools to help, and in the event that we didn't have coverage because of the lack of substitutes? So that would be a piece of the position as well, and that came from the nurses. So we added that to our discussion of what this position was going to entail. Additionally, Dr. Albert, who has been working more closely with the district this year because of COVID-19, and the other issues that we face regarding student health, has indicated that he feels that he is not able to do as good of a job as could be done to address the primary healthcare needs of our children who rely on a school physician to do physicals. These are, these are students that may not have, in some cases, a primary care provider. So he reached out to Molly McGrath. I asked her to forward the information to me, and feels that there is a role for a nurse to assist him, not just in giving the physical, but in promoting the idea with families, with our social workers, that students ought to have primary care provider, and that those follow-up to the physicals could be done to make sure that it's being done in a more comprehensive way. So all of these pieces are kind of, we're trying to piece together into what this position would be, and we haven't completed that process yet. And we want to talk to the SRP regarding this and the nurses directly. When we put out this document, we caused concern because we put a budgeted amount in there that doesn't necessarily reflect what we're thinking about right now, and doesn't necessarily deal with the actual salary. So Linda, you can help me with this. It's not, it's not a nurse being paid $59,714. We want to explain this, maybe does this document cause some concern?
Thank you, Mr. Simons. So what is currently in the plan, the way that $59,714 is calculated, is in the SRP contract, the 2021, 2022 Step Six for a nurse, a registered nurse, is $31.74 an hour. They work seven hours a day, 190 days a year. That comes out to $42,215. We also added in there a COVID and wellness coordinator for the additional responsibilities that, of $6,000. So that comes to $48,215. Then when we add FICA on there of 7.65%, plus ERS at 16.2%, that comes out to $59,714. And as Mr. Simon said, we were talking about this position being a 12-month position. So keep that in mind of the $59,714 altogether. If I were to take that, say, Step Six, if I were to take that, say, Step Six in the contract, that $42,215 divided by 10 months, and then multiply it by 12 months to come out with its annual salary, that annual salary would be $50,658.
Lights off.
Okay. Thank you.
Switch mics.
Thank you. So if, I'm just going to start on the 12-month position again. If I were to take that current Step Six, 10-month nursing position of $42,215 divided by 10 months, that comes out to $4,221.50 a month. Multiply that by 12 months, it comes out to $50,658. FICA of 7.65% on top of that is $3,875, and ERS of 16.2% on that is $8,207. So that comes out to a total salary, FICA and ERS, of $62,740. So that compared to the $59,714, it's, it's a current savings of $3,026 under this current proposal, as I calculated.
So over time, this is been trying to look at really three sets of needs. The COVID situation, the fact that we have, will have, we want to support increased health services for the children on a daily basis, and we want to lend some enhanced healthcare services for those students who rely on the district for physicals as a liaison to promote primary care. Additionally, districts are struggling to hire nurses, and we feel like we need additional nurses. We want to make it clear that this position would involve daily work with students on an assignment basis to help the nurses that we have, in addition to some of these other areas, because it would be a 12-month position. We can't, we have trouble finding nurses for summer school. In fact, our current COVID coordinator is fulfilling one of those slots for summer school. In the following summer, we would envision that the 12-month position would also be as part of their duties. They would be working in summer school, not for extra pay, would be part of the 12-month salary. All of this has kind of been under discussion the last couple of weeks. I asked Marissa to give me some data on what it's been like to try to find nursing substitutes. We really feel there's a need. We want to iron out how that position would be deployed, bring it back to the board. Anyone who's currently employed by the district would be eligible to apply for that position. And we got to iron it out with the SRP and the nurses, but we, all districts, districts are not able to pay nurses what they make in other settings. We've struggled with that, and we've lost people.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. So we have posted for substitute nurses a number of times this fiscal year. So just to give you an idea, we posted from August 3rd to August 17th, 2020. That resulted in no candidates applying for our subnurse posting. We posted again October 27th through November 9th, 2020, resulting in no applicants applying. January 20th, 2021 through February 2nd, 2021, no candidates have applied. We most recently posted April 29th, 2021 through May 12th, 2021, no candidates applied. We most recently were recognized as a top workplace, and we included the need for substitute nurses in that ad that ran in the Times Union on May 23rd, 2021. At this time, no substitute nurses have applied. Three times during the school year, we had individuals reach out to us for potential interest, and due to the substitute nature of the assignments that we could provide, those individuals were not willing to follow through with the substitute employment, and were looking for really full-time work. So we continue our efforts in recruiting. We're just not seeing that the candidate pool is there, but we continue to try our best.
Marissa. So there'll be further discussions of this position, and certainly want the board to weigh in. We expect we'll have more discussions about all of this at the next meeting. The other, the other items, just real quickly. The attendance intervention specialist, yeah, this focuses on someone to address chronic absenteeism, students particularly at the middle school and high school. We don't want to necessarily support what some would consider to be the old truant officer model, you know, pick yourself to school, knock on the door, kind of coercive approach that maybe some of us were familiar with when we were in high school, not me, but maybe some people that I knew. We feel that it's more of an issue for a social worker to find out what the barriers to school attendance are, work with the children, and work with the families. Mr. McHugh has shared that board meetings, chronic absenteeism data, along with the education committee. So we were looking for an additional social worker position to focus on this and work with the administrative team. Fitness and nutrition coordinator, Mr. Leonard has requested this as a way to focus on emotional, physical, and social health of our children. I have indicated in my communications that I want to take a little bit more time to think about this. I want to make sure that this position is targeted to those kids that need it the most. I don't necessarily want just the student athletes working with this person in the weight room, for example. I want those kids that may be failing physical education to have an alternative, and we do have a number of kids that are failing physical education. I want to see kids maybe walking trails, doing things outdoors that they like to do, and I promote physical, lifelong physical activities. So I'm still thinking about this one. I agree that there's a need. I just want to make sure that it's tailored to all kids, and particularly those kids that might not like gym, not like sports, and the reason that they don't pass or graduate is because they failed physical education, believe it or not. Jim, can you talk a little bit about our phys ed data?
I believe Mr. Harkins is also on, if I get this incorrect, but we do monitor our quarter failures, and we have about 120 to 140 students that are failing physical education. So even in a COVID pandemic year where we weren't requiring students to change for phys ed, and we were doing things like taking them outside, and kids were allowed to play camp, jam, and, you know, listen to music and walk the track, we still aren't getting that participation. So this position really has to be well thought out to provide an alternative for those students to engage in some sort of wellness activity that would qualify for that BE credit as
The high school start time was brought up earlier, and well, this next item isn't necessarily directly related to high school start time. It is a software web-based program that, and hardware, that enables us to instantaneously know who's on the bus and who's currently riding the bus. And there is a parent piece too, where you can see where your traffic is. So if bus 37 is late, there's an app, parent can go on the app, oh, Johnny, the bus was just running late. My son Johnny is still on, on the bus. Additionally, there's better routing capabilities associated with this program, as I understand it. Routing capabilities might give us a different tool, other than the current TransFinder to use, to plot out different bus models that might be utilized for addressing start time. Who's riding the bus, when they ride the bus, when they don't ride the bus, whether our buses are at full occupancy or not. Those have been issues that existed before COVID. They became important this year, even more so because we wanted to make sure that we had appropriate distancing on the bus. One of the areas that we looked at was who's actually riding every day and who's not. Could we be more efficient as more kids are coming back to school? So Mark Knoweth is out, are you out there? He's out there, I don't want to put him on the spot. He's out there. I don't wanna put him on the spot. If you are and you feel like commenting, go right ahead. And I'll be up there. Linda, do you have anything to add on this one? Okay, very good. Air quality, better filtering, air conditioning. These are all topics that have come up during COVID. Air conditioning always comes up every spring. Since I've been here for five years, the teachers' union has discussed with me whether or not we could conceive of air conditioning in a capital project. We verified with our architect, our construction manager. I know from experience that when you replace heating and ventilation systems with newer systems, air conditioning or climate control is adable under a capital project. Paul Bickel has done some preliminary work with Trane, looking at the per-unit ventilator costs. The unit ventilators themselves, we started looking at because we wanted to replace them with unit ventilators that would could utilize higher MERV rating filters. Today, we had a construction meeting, and we talked about if you go and you replace unit ventilators, can you equip those unit ventilators so that in a future capital project, they could be connected with other components of the system to provide air conditioning? So the cost, the $25,000 cost per unit ventilator includes the appropriate coils, as I understand it. And I don't know much about HVAC to be able to do that. There are, if you did all the elementary school unit ventilators right now, I think there are more than 230 unit ventilators. And that would eat up the majority of these federal funds. However, in talking with Linda, Linda talking with ASMR and Questar State Aid Planning, we believe that it is permissible to utilize these federal monies for either lowering the local share cost of a future capital project or upgrading your heating and ventilation systems in all of your buildings, or going about the capital project traditionally, and then, which is typically bonding, borrowing, going out for a public vote, and then rather than budgeting the principal and interest costs of the project in your annual budget, utilizing monies that have been set aside in a capital project reserve, capital reserve. So we're exploring some different options to address this. It didn't make sense to me right now to do 10 unit ventilators. Where do you choose to put them? I think we would be better off doing this as part of a complete capital project as long as we were able to get those funds budgeted over federal funds. And I've asked the architects to start working on an estimate of what it would take to upgrade the unit ventilators and provide air conditioning, the chillers, and everything that would be needed at the elementary schools to bring back to you. And we would use the federal money to have no impact on the taxpayers. This component of the project. And we have a five-year plan. It's building conditions, so let's do it anyways. Anything to add on the capital reserve?
No, I don't think so. I think you covered it all. And basically, it would be putting these monies aside to make up our, the local district portion, the expense.
Is that, would it be permissible, anything, in the reserve?
By establishing a capital reserve.
Which, would say that all this is permissible? Because you're improving your infrastructure, health and safety, your infrastructure, and you're doing a good long-range planning. So you get upgraded heating and ventilation, better filtering, better air quality and air conditioning. And the portion that is not reimbursable from the state is paid for out of the capital reserve. And the monies that are set aside in the capital reserve are the federal monies. But we actually go about doing that. We're still exploring. Yeah, this was a brainstorming document. There are some newer types of point-of-sale software that Phyllis Sanford Crew has requested to manage free and reduced lunch electronically. There are some needs for, as you recall, we bought a lot of tables. We bought a lot of three-by-three tables if social distancing is still required in cafeterias. There are some buildings that will need more of those because all the kids will be there. So we wanna put those tables into the budget for the federal programs. We've talked about the idea that many kids might be interested in doing some type of apprenticeship program right within our own schools. Learn about culinary and food service, particularly at the middle school level, maybe before they're eligible to go to Bosse's. Because not eligible to go to Bosse's until their junior or senior year. Phyllis was interested in putting together some kind of a program like that with our staff. We know that the Smart Schools monies are approved, and we've submitted our plan, but there's no timeline on the Smart Schools money to spend, spend the Smart Schools money. So what we'd like to do is utilize the federal monies to replace the Chromebooks, Sonic boards, and provide some other technology for live streaming of events. For example, we've had live-streaming sporting events, graduations, other types of ceremonies. Use this money now, get the approval for the Smart Schools money. And then that gives us sustainability years, well, for years to replace other equipment. Did I explain it right?
Exactly correct.
That was Linda's brainstorm.
That's very interesting. So the bond monies do not have expiration?
The Smart Schools bond money does not have an expiration date on it. While this does, so I thought we could use this money first.
Then apply later.
Another thing we wanna do, and I'm done, I think this is worth taking some time on to just explain because we have hundreds and hundreds of COVID. Before I came as superintendent, the assistant superintendent at the time here contacted me and said, talked to me about a student help desk program where students learn how to staff a call center, help other kids with technology issues. We were unable to do it for various reasons at the time. And Peter has asked that we consider putting this together. High school kids being available on help desk, help other kids. You might need a monitor or something, somebody to supervise it. I believe that the kids have the skills already, the background to do this without a lot of technical help. It does need somebody to coordinate, supervise the program. So it's not a huge cost, but it might be a good way to engage the kids.
Do they get any credit for like service time?
If the board would have approved credit, you could certainly award credit for that. So that's everything. It's a work in progress. We see this as sort of a first blush. We want to have opportunities for the board to give comments or questions or concerns right now, and we'll continue to work on this.
Mr. Simons, could I add? There's actually one more proposal that...
Oh, I missed it.
No, you did not miss it. I missed it, putting it on there. And it is called the Mac and Via eBook audiobook accounts. The librarians suggested this to us. It's a total cost of $35,000. And it would specifically provide us with a list of eBooks regarding, if I could just read this, "Children experience all types of stressors, and books can provide therapeutic support. Social-emotional titles focused on the five principles of social-emotional learning, social awareness, self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, and relationship skills." So this would, we would have a list of books, eBooks that are available. They're all at all different costs. So we estimate that this $35,000 amongst the five elementary schools would provide approximately 83 books a year. So I will add that to our list.
Very good. We did talk about that. That sounds like a great idea.
So we've had a comprehensive review of the initial draft plan. I appreciate the feedback. It's a lot of work, obviously, to get the suggestions, a lot of the figures and data together for the board to review and the team to review. Initial thoughts? Anyone wanna start? Wherever you wanna come in, on general.
I have three pages.
You have three pages? So... Right, right. We wanna have, read each piece. If you wanna have some general comments now, and then provide feedback to superintendent, the team. We'll do that. Since we're gonna get the extension, there's not a rush on this. Initially was something we were worried about. So you hear back?
The extension, I have not received confirmation on that, but they, yeah, I filed today. So the extension should bring us through July 15.
So why don't the people have notes that you wanna do is pull those together, send them to Mr. Simons. But general comments now?
I just have a question.
Good question.
I just wanna confirm, for the teachers who've got the salary plus benefits, does that also include TAs and other positions? Are benefits included?
Yeah, the 52K was listed there. Is there benefits and salaries that swing in?
Yes, for both the teachers and the TAs, I've included salaries and benefits. And I view Step 3 of those positions for next year.
And nursing staff, what step do you have that position?
The district-wide nursing position is at Step 6.
And do we have staff at Step 6 currently? The nursing staff?
I'm not sure if they're, I'm not sure if they're currently. I do know there will be for the 2021, '22 school year, but we can examine that, the schedule. I can certainly provide you with the information of where each nurse and staff is currently for '21, '22.
Thank you for this. I think there's a lot of great ideas, a lot of necessary things that we haven't been able to do anything with. And I think this is a great time to put a lot of these things into motion.
Thanks, Joanne. Anyone else?
I'd love a general comment.
Mark, general comment?
Sustainability.
Sustainability, number one?
Just roughly looking over this, we were, you know, about $2.5 million to bring on 35 employees. And that's just roughly. You know, 35 employees that maybe we can employ one year, or maybe two. And then what happens? If we build the program up, and then all of a sudden now we can't sustain it because we can't sustain roughly $2.4 million in our budgets. So, you know, I just want to be mindful that sustainability, you know, hiring people with the possibility that they can only be working here one year. Well, it'll be more than one year. But so this $82,000 times 10 equals $820,000. Is that for three years, or is that for one year?
$82,000 is a teacher's salary estimated for one year.
It's times 10, so $820,000. So if you did that over a three-year period, that's 2. something million dollars. But we only got 3.9 million.
I wanna talk about that, if you don't mind me addressing that, sustainability. One of the things that is done every year by the district is we do a staffing report, and we post it online, we provide it to the board, and it lists all the teachers by category. Our intent would be to hire staff into these positions for the specific purpose of providing the academic support, mental health support. And as people retire, let's take the elementary ten position. We've talked about a phase in and a phase out, which is a sustainability. You hire, let's say you hire those 10 teachers right now. It may become nine the following year, eight the following year, seven the following year. So at the end of, this money is intended to be seed money or boost money to boost the kids back up. At the end of that process, when the grant runs out, we wind up at the same number of positions based on enrollment. It might not be exactly the same, but the understanding is that these positions are brought into the district for the years in which we have the grant. And as people retire, because we have retirements every year, you hire 10 elementary positions in these roles. A teacher retires next year, it becomes nine. The position is slotted back in to replace the retirement position. So it's phased in, give the kids the support they need, and then you phase it out. The other thing that we're doing is some of the things that have been identified in here are also in our general fund budget, such as the AIS positions. We will now have that money next year to sustain those AIS positions. So when we sit down and propose the general fund budget next year, we will give the board a report of, here are the positions that we've brought in this year. What is it gonna look like next year? And to make sure and monitor that it isn't ballooning or escalating our general fund budget. The funding source that we utilize for these positions has nothing to do with tenure, has nothing to do with their probationary period. They would still be regular teachers. I would just know differently. But it would be our obligation as a district to have a sustainability plan that phases them out. You know, and part of that, part of that metric will be the reading, math scores, the chronic attendance data, the number of kids participating. So we recognize that this money isn't intended to balloon the budget. It's intended to be a boost for the kids, and we've talked about it. There's really no way, and it's really somewhat of a challenge for districts to spend $7 million and address all of these issues. We have no guarantee that the money's gonna be here and there. So our plan would be phase it in and phase it out based on the needs of the district. So at the end of the process, you're not, you're not shifting $7 million worth of expense onto your general fund taxpayers.
So the intent would be when you hire 10, I'm just looking at this first one, we didn't have 10 teachers retire this year. So if you're saying you're hiring 10 elementary teachers district-wide, and then you're gonna slot them into positions, I mean, we didn't have 10 elementary.
No, it's one at a time or two at a time based on the number of retirees. So you have the money until 2023 and 2024. So that would be more than a one-year.
So we get $3 million in 2022, $3 million in 2023? No, we have $3 million, 3.9 million, that's it. We can spend it over a three-year period.
That's right.
But if we're hiring 10 elementary school teachers, and the total is $820,000, and we wanna sustain that for a three-year period, then you're talking...
The 10th, let's take the 10th, 10 teachers. The person that retires is already in your general fund budget, it's not in your federal programs. You, if you leave that position for a regular classroom position, you take the 10th person, you put him into that regular position, and it leaves nine. That money is still in the general fund budget when that person retires.
So Jeff, we're not hiring all 10 at once?
We may. We have made a determination that it is 10.
Because I would worry that we're not...
You already have, you already have the retirees' position that leaves the district in the general fund budget. You already need to hire that person to replace that person. Instead of hiring somebody from the outside, if these folks do a good job, they would be slotted into those positions. So that reduces to nine. So it's a shifting of positions out of these federal funds that won't be with us into regular positions that are typically budgeted in the general fund budget.
So the risk we have is if we don't have 10 retirees in three years? Because then, then...
You're assuming that, the data doesn't show, I mean, the part for future course and budget is that if the data shows we need more interventions, the board has to decide whether they wanna sustain positions beyond the regular staffing replacement schedule because that's the critical part, the data getting together on the interventions, how successful they are. If we don't need all those, or we don't have the principal... If we don't need all those or we don't have the support, we're going to have to make some hard decisions about accessing or absorbing the positions to continue the progress that was made. It's going to be decisions that happen over time. Will we get all the retirements? We may not. But then comes the board's decision during the budget.
That's right.
To say, we want to invest in, we'll take two more of those positions out of the grant funds and put it in the general fund. If we can't do that, we access. I mean, it's just going to come down to that. So it's going to be very specific monitoring of the data and the budget to make sure these positions do not get shipped to the general fund, it increases taxes.
You also have other sources. You have your Title I monies, people retire with it, the title grant. So you could potentially shift those positions into Title I. So at the end of the day, your general fund, your general fund staffing will only go up through an action of the board that determines that they want to maintain some.
So when you do these postings for these positions, is there something you put in there that it's, you know, temporary with the possibility of full-time? I mean, I just don't, I guess I don't understand how you can hire 10 people and how we can sustain that at $820,000 a year if nobody retires, you didn't have any elementary school teachers retire in the next three years.
Based on the data that we have, we always have one or two.
But then the program that they're teaching here that we want to increase, just say year one, you had three elementary school teachers that retired, and you took three of these folks and put them into those positions, well, the job that they were doing that we created now goes away because they're going to go into the.
Regular education.
Yes.
Exactly. So if we're doing a good job, bringing the kids up, they should go away. You're shifting them in, they're still probationarily appointed teachers because under the law, there's really, the only way you can have a term sub is if somebody's out on a leave of absence. So they come into the district as probationary teachers. They're still evaluated the same way through the APPR, the APPR is in place. And they're serving in roles. Some of these positions might, existing teachers might want them. You know, a senior teacher may want to move into this role because they want to help the kids in this way, opening up another slot in their, in their assignment. But at the end of the, you know, you may go from 10 to eight, six, based on the data of how the kids are doing. It will be our obligation to present that data and say, you know what, these were, these were positions to give the kids the extra support as they transition back. There's no way to give them the extra support and meet this mandate without extra staff. There's just no way. So the idea that you're not supposed to spend it on the current funds is true, but you can't address the need without the staff. So it comes to coming on us to phase it in and phase it out.
Didn't we add a couple of positions this year at the elementary level based on enrollment also? Haven't we done that almost every year? Haven't we added a position or two? So when we're looking at retirements, these people could also possibly be moved into positions that become necessary through enrollment increases because we have been noticing that our enrollment is increasing.
Based on the projections we've saw.
Based on projections, right. So I don't think we have to look at it just saying, well, 10 people have to retire. We, we will need, hopefully, we'll be able to slot these people into 10 vacancies that may occur through retirement or through growth in our district. So I think that gives us a little bit more room.
Well, that's not just, I use that because that's the first one. But if you look at, it's almost hiring 35 additional people. So it's 30, you know, I just said the 10 because that's what's in this first one. But if you go through the whole document and you start adding up, you know, the number of hiring employees, you know, it's, it's, it's up there into the high twenties, low thirties of new staff. So, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm not against it. I'm just saying we have to be able to, to, I would hate to have to hire somebody and then tell them in two years, guess what, can't afford it, you're gone. We haven't done that in this district in a lot of years. We've been able to sustain our employees and not have cuts because of the smart budgeting we've done. I would hate to hire, you know, 30 some odd teachers or 30 some odd staff members and then in a couple of years say, you know what, we got to cut 20 people now. And all of a sudden, you know, East Green Central Schools cut 20 jobs. So I just want us to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, looking at the number of employees that we're bringing on, and can we sustain that over a few, three years? Because it may not be this board that's going to have to cut or make cuts or tell people we got to raise taxes, right? That's all I'm asking.
I'm in full agreement with that. We've had some, you know, some conversations about that.
And if we could just get, when you can, and not tonight, but maybe how much we got under the, the other grant?
I'm sorry, I did not bring that.
That's okay.
Slightly over $3 million, but I'll.
And was there a source document that came from the federal government that outlines what we can and cannot use the funds for?
Southwood, yes. In fact, we got another one from the state today, Mr. Southwood. I can get you that.
Thank you. That's all I have. I'll email my questions out.
Thank you. Joanne?
I just have one other quick question. These 10 teachers are, I'm just saying the teachers could be TAs, anybody. Safely hire these 10 people. When do their tenure track start? When they fill in a regular position after somebody retires?
When they're hired, period. The source of their funding has nothing to do with New York State pendulum. So hire somebody out of a grant. They're given the same four-year probationary period, the same provisional period. Civil service employee. The rules for probationary employees don't change based on the funding source.
Anyone else? Trevor?
Hey, so I think what we're really talking about and what's kind of exciting at the same time scary, right, is true succession planning, which most public schools are not really able to do because of the funding. And so what we're attempting to do through some creative thinking is to try to hire some of these positions with the thought of through natural attrition, through growth, through resignation, because there will be people or, you know, maybe somebody moving out of the area or having another opportunity to be able to do some actual succession planning. And I think I really applaud the creativity. The scary part is, yes, can you sustain that piece of it? But I really do like that thinking. And again, you're in a completely different space, right, than we traditionally are. So kudos for that. In addition, the universal screening tool, has anybody thought about reaching out to Dr. Mark Brackett at Yale University? We had met him at the conference. He's the one who does social emotional learning. He has the Ruler Program there. And I'm thinking he might have some kind of screening or assessment tool. If you're not connected with him, I can connect you with him.
That'd be great.
So, because I've been following him since we went to the school arts conference. Are you connected with him, Jen? Okay, but I will connect you. The other piece is kudos on remembering about the Heartland Moses H P O S, not at Phyllis Witten. But that actually was proposed way back when they had the assessment done by that outside consultant that came in and they made the recommendation to purchase that at that time. And I love the idea of the apprenticeship programs and building again in these alternative options for students to start to look at career interests because I think it's critically important. And these additional screening tools, Jen, I could create a few more, Mr. McKee, I should say, I'm sorry, about not spending 10 weeks of 40 weeks assessing. So the faster that we can assess, the faster we can figure out what the issues are and attack that. And I think that that is awesome. All of these additional alternative kind of programs, the E-CLIM program, we're talking about the alternative programs with nutritional and wellness, ROTC, Project Adventure. We will then touch other students that maybe our programming has not been able to touch. That's something that is near and dear to my heart. It is the original reason I ran, which is how do we become creative? How can we touch every student in the district in some way? So I'm very excited by that potential. And again, I think we're positioned in a very different way than we ever have been before, pre-COVID, because these things wouldn't necessarily be able to happen. Yes, the scary part is the funding and the sustainability going forward, but if there's a way to, again, put the money aside through the general fund and then shift it, right? So trying to continue to push that out, just like with the smart schools, brilliant, 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 brilliant. It is, right? Because again, sometimes we can step back from it and we don't have the pressure of that, right, where you've got to do it right now in this moment. It's like, what can we look at to be able to do that? The library request, excellent. Again, all of our program areas are doing these assessments. We haven't been in a position, and some of these things are going to last longer than that, right? That access to those resources, same thing with the Chromebooks and the one-to-one, that technology is out for three years. And then there's going to be hopefully other creative ways of being able to fund that. And then lastly, and then I'll shut up, the help desk, the work experience in the apprenticeship program, yes. Technology is the wave of the future. And again, I couldn't be more excited as I transition away from the board because again, I think you're just positioned with some of this federal money. Not that anything really awesome has come out of COVID, but this is certainly clearly funding with this additional federal funding and safe funding that could potentially push us forward. So, thanks.
Michelle?
Yeah, I'll be real quick. I do love a lot of these programs. I especially like the technology components because it really doesn't put as much risk on future board budgets. So, and I am concerned about that. We have a challenging rate here and we can't add to that. So we'll have to monitor that. And somebody may be the bad person, and I'm not sure that any of us want to know who that's going to be and put a person hide yours down line of that. So I think we need to think hard about that. And then the only other item I had is in terms of some of the programs, I love the other options and the other programs that Jen mentioned. I'd like to see some that, some seem to be a lot focused on their school. I'd like to see where they are in the middle school and the elementary school. They, these guys need some attention too. And they may cross over, but you know, when I gear towards that, I'm thinking fitness and nutrition, you're not going to be doing a lot in elementary schools. Well, what can we do for them? What can we do for the middle schools if we're not doing those?
Project Adventure stuff can apply to middle school. There's a program that isn't a ROTC program, but it's a similar patrol is for middle school. That is, in some schools, it was in my prior district. So there are things like those that we're proposing for high school that we could talk about having at the middle, having at the middle school. So where patrol is learning about rescue, learning about aeronautics, learning about how to, that's a similar climate as ROTC, kids wearing uniforms, learn about the same things they learned about in ROTC and a lot of new different types of projects.
And with this money, they're not getting air conditioning, they're building, right? Is that what we're saying? If I hear that one more time?
Not yet.
Okay.
It's a lot, it's a, it's a, it's a whole video of our HVAC system.
Are we putting that in the capital component?
We've asked the R B C in the building condition survey to identify the HVAC systems in the elementary schools as needing to be replaced, where they need to be replaced and to tell you in the air conditioning.
Okay.
We've been talking about that for a while before this money came. One of the reasons that we're in, we're still in phase two and phase three of the current project.
Ready for me? I see the microphone being fast, Mr. Dunn is on.
I appreciate all the feedback.
Just a couple of quick comments. I'll be brief, everyone's covered it. What I liked about the conversation tonight and the proposal, it's about student re-engagement and how can we be creative? I don't think we realize how disconnected a lot of our regular students are. And that's my concern as we move forward, that we be creative in a lot of different ways to try to get everyone to re-engage. It's going to take a huge effort. It's getting the parents re-engaged, it's getting the community re-engaged, it's getting our staff re-engaged. So this, I think, is a really great opportunity. And I go back to Jeff's comment, this is really seed money. And you're right, everyone's concerned about sustainability. But if we're successful within the terms of this grant, then the dire straits that we could face ourselves, and hopefully will diminish, and we'll be able to plan better. I know in my career in marketing and test this, there was always grant officers hired, 10, 12 at a rip, and they knew when they came on that we didn't achieve the goals and couldn't do it. I think the mission is much greater than worrying about that at this point. Doesn't mean we're not concerned about it. But I do, I do think that we really have to give a hard look. And I want to draw to the CTA program. I think it's a great idea. The anxieties being passed to young students in the middle school level right now are just massive. And if we can get these kids to come back to school through intensive hands-on work, it's really a great thing. And same thing with the math. If you guys remember, for those of us who are here, math was intended to be a temporary place for kids to come back into school. And we kind of lost that focus a little bit. And there was also a school counselor that never got funded that was supposed to be in the original proposal. And I think this is great because we talk about early interventions. And one of the greatest transitions in middle school that we've kind of neglected is between five and six. It's a massive, you go from a small nurturing environment into a massive, let's face it, our middle school is like a high school. It has the same deal, it has the same thing, but you have kids who are at so many different maturity levels. So I think it's really important, those two programs. But the key is, and what we've said is the reintegration, the re-engagement of kids. And that's what I like about, that's what I see in this proposal, is how can we be creative to get the kids back interested at school at even a greater pace than we were prior to the pandemic? And I think what we recognize is we can offer specialized programs all we want and get kids in there, but we want to be resilient and be able to come back into the main population too. And I think that's a great thing. And the last thing I'll leave with this presentation, what I liked about it was in so many ways, it was aligned to our board goals. And we really put a lot of energy into that. So I really appreciate the depth of work that is only the tip of the iceberg for this problem. I think there's so many unknowns that I think the feedback is great, the community feedback is great. But I just want everyone to know that, you know, man, yours, the seas are still going to get rough because everyone's vaccinated and because all this stuff is going away. It is not going away. And we need to be creative as a community to bring it all back around, even to get where we want to be in a couple of years. That's my two cents for tonight.
Thanks, John. Close you? We're good?
Quiet.
Quiet.
Thank you for all the comments and questions.
I just want to echo what John said. I think the important part two of this is that Mr. Simons went off the template in the second document, but really everything is tied, like John said, to a three-year plan, who's responsible, how it's going to be sustained and those kinds of things, how it's being measured. And that's critical as part of the process. We need to be, like John said, we're not losing sight of the board goals and tracking them all. So we will move on to the rest of the agenda, regular business. We talked about the annual organization meeting date of July 13th. The motion to approve that. Frank, second. Kathleen, all those in the paper? Yes. Next item was the board meeting schedule. Any questions or comments? You ought to chance to look at that. All right. The motion approved the schedule for the board. Joanne, second. Mark, all those in the paper? Mark, all those in the paper? All right, approved. Approve all programs for resident children with disabilities. Questions or comments? Seeing none, need a motion to approve that? Jennifer, second. Michelle, all those in the paper? Approved. Okay, we had some comments about this, uh, last time. This is the board policy on the, uh, waiting of the non-resident employees' children to attend the district. So this is the first reading. Um, hopefully you provide some feedback to Mr. Simons. Is there any, uh, comments you wanna make in the first reading? None, no motion to approve anything, just more comments, decision. And no, we, we address the concerns about numbers and tracking that. Any associated expenses?
Things have been changed since the discussion at the other last meeting. We didn't hear any, uh, recommendations to change anything. So if board members wanna review it again and have a concern or want something, uh, to be considered for inclusion in the policy, we still have time between now and the next meeting.
Please get your comments to, uh, Mr. Simons. Again, that's, the change on that is underlined in the regulations, number seven and number eight of the document. Going to item E, resolution approved the proposed change in policy, second reading. That has to do with the, um, bus and accident policy. Any questions or comments? None, need a motion to approve that? Mark, second. Kathleen, all those in the paper? So we have a bid for rubbish removal, recycled cardboard and homeingles. A low bidder was county waste. Any questions or comments in the bid process? Significantly lower, we, we're welcome.
Mr. Pino, it is, I, I noticed that myself. And, uh, we believe one of the reasons is county waste and recycling owns their own landfill.
To make that.
And, and they currently, uh, have the service this year, so they, um, we have to, uh, have the units here.
Very good. Any final questions or comments for Linda on the bid? If not, need a motion to approve the bid. Somebody? Jennifer, Michelle, the second, all those in the paper?
My lobby abstaining.
Oh, I'm sorry, John Dunn, abstaining, Jeannie?
Okay.
All right, we'll move to the intent committee reports. Marissa, you are first on the appendix D.
Thank you, Ms. Rubio. The appendix D committee met on Monday, May 24th. The EGTA provided a very fair cost draft matrix. Uh, and with that, we are only $4,000 away with being within the budget parameters. Uh, we had made some suggest, suggested adjustments that could be made, uh, in order to bring that, uh, $4,000 down and be within the budget, uh, parameters. And we are meeting tomorrow as a committee, and hopefully, um, I can provide further feedback on that. We wanted to give some serious consideration to compensating the unpaid clubs. Um, earlier this week, I sent out an email to our, uh, committee members with some history regarding those clubs, and we'll have continued conversations regarding that tomorrow. Does anyone have any questions?
Jennifer, Joanne, good? All right. Roundup by Jim Duggan?
We're trying.
Thank you for your efforts. Linda, do you have anything?
No, at this time.
Mr. McKew?
The CCS minutes from June 2nd were attached. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. And Mr. Simons, the advocacy forum?
Yes, we held an advocacy forum, um, last week with participation from all of the districts of Questar Bosse. We invited all of our elected legislators, assembly and senators, uh, and the commissioner of education. Uh, it was very successful from the standpoint of, uh, the commissioner initially did not believe that she was going to be able to stay for the whole time, but did stay for the whole time and did hear from students, board member, administrators, parents about the need for guidance that will provide for us to be able to fully reopen in September. Uh, we distributed the video and a follow-up letter to those elected officials that were not able to attend. I would also say that John McDonald, who represents a portion of East Green Bush, did come and attend for the full-time after a very busy legislative session, and I appreciated that very much. We sent the letter and the video for those who, uh, were not able to attend. One of the, uh, encouraging comments that the commissioner made was that there is an effort to work more closely with the Department of Health and the governor's office. We have been frustrated and not really seen much of that this year, including recently regarding the masks. But, uh, it was encouraging to hear that as the developing of plans for September, that there would be more, um, communication and coordination among the state agencies. Additionally, we've been using that tool Thought Exchange this year, uh, to engage, uh, the community. I put some data together for you to take a look at, which kinda captures the key themes, concerns. Mark Adam has been really doing a lot of that, kind of seems interfacing with Thought Exchange. Rather than go over it tonight, because we've had a rather long meeting, we had a hundred and eight participants. The only highlight I will make is ninety-three percent of those that participated agree that the regulations should be met full-time in person, ready in September. There were other key themes that were, uh, captured in the data that Thought Exchange provides for us. So it's been a good investment, and we purchase it through Questar. We're encouraging other districts to join us next year at Thought Exchange, so that the cost for us will come down. With Questar, but it's been really helpful to us, because we can't have, we can't have large-scale meetings, so a hundred and eight people could participate, uh, and give us their views, so very helpful. It was a very successful event.
Thanks, Mr. Duggan. Kathleen, any comments?
I just wanted to say I thought you did a great job, but also Mark did a really good job, um, kind of moderating from the Thought Exchange and taking those thoughts and putting them into meaningful questions to the different people. I just thought you did a really good job of that.
Mark Adam did a super job. Valuable during this whole period of time.
I do wanna thank, uh, Alyssa and Joseph for participating as students, I love you. And, uh, Ms. Turner, who was a parent of the district, also participated. So we appreciate their comments and being very honest and upfront about how they felt about the impact of, to re-engage. Like John said, a lot about transitioning back to school and having that good guidance system as possible. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Simons. Table motions, I don't have anything at this time? Old, old business, board members, anything? I'll bring forward. Moving to item thirteen now, the consent agenda. Questions, comments? Joanne?
To take quick congratulations to Mr. Edwardson and Mr. Zildemee, um, with forty-seven and thirty-four years of service respected to the district. Just amazing amount of time, and we appreciate everything they have done for our children.
Thanks, Joanne.
I need to abstain from saying.
So will all items C for a separate vote? Anyone else, questions or comments for your, the consent agenda? All right. Seeing, uh, no further comments or questions, I need a motion to approve items A through J, with the exception of item C. Deanna, I need a second. Joanne, all those in favor? Approved. Need a motion on item C? Kathleen, need a second. John, all those in favor? All those abstaining? One, Michelle? Approved, thank you. We have an addendum, um, we talked about the retirement incentive, and we know there was some folks there. Jeff, you wanna introduce this topic?
Uh, yes, uh, in consultation with our attorney, the firmer firm, Mr. Budman, because this incentive, uh, was modified, uh, we need to approve another memorandum of agreement to reflect the actual, uh, incentive. So it's a formality to ensure that it's memorialized in agreement.
Very good. Any questions or comments on the MOA? Seeing none, need a motion to approve the MOA? Jennifer, second. Mark, all those there?
Probably abstaining.
Any abstaining? One, John Dunn? Had a Jean?
Yep.
Uh, board members, any new business that you wanna discuss or bring forward for the Public forum number two, Linda, any comments? Moving quick here.
Uh, we, we have one comment, which is a copy and pasted email from Natalie Mulligan that we received earlier. This is, um, copied from N. Madala, and, uh, it's just in regard to, she's not supporting the district white nurse. I don't know other comments.
Who is this?
N. Madala.
Um, no more comments from the public? We did, again, review the draft plan, so if there are some things, is that comment periods still open, Jeff, or?
Uh, yes, uh, anyone in our educational community can offer comments through emails to my office or to the board until such time as we finalize and have the board approve the plan. We would anticipate that that would likely be done in July.
Good.
Or, or portions of it, depending on what our timelines are for hiring, should the board approve certain positions.
Excellent.
We'll definitely be talking about it as a discussion item again next meeting.
Very good. Uh, next is our board forum. I'll start on my left. Michelle, anything? Jennifer? John? Mark? Deanna? Kathleen's good. Joanne's good. Frank is good.
I just wanna make, uh, one comment. The Rensler Education Center of Questar Bosse did have CTU awards recently, and there were some East Green Bush students who were recognized and received scholarships. I just wanna congratulate them on their awards and, um, their participation in those programs and wish them well in their future in those programs. And, uh, you know, in a couple of weeks, we have graduation. We talked about some concerns people had, but I think, you know, we're moving forward, weather permitting, we're gonna have a great celebration, really excited about being there a few weeks, and, um, it's gonna be great for our kids. And I see that Katie, who was here earlier, very excited to finish out the school year and to move on to their, their additional plans after their, uh, high school career. So looking forward to that and anticipation, so.
Your final comments, Mr. Simons?
I just have one other item. I wanna thank all of our representatives from the Rensler County Legislature. They sent me a commendation certificate to the district due to our being selected as a time shooting workplace. Ellen Hoffman, Vice Chairman, Tom Grant, County Legislature, Rob Bailey, and Leon Fiacco, representing the second district, sent us a nice letter and a commendation for us, which we will hang in the central office. So I thank the county legislature.
Is there anything follow-up from the top of the CTU, as far as virtual event?
It was a virtual event. It was held, um, two weeks ago, I believe, and we were able to take out an ad in the paper, and it was really nice, so we approve please about that.
And positive business. And we'll get a nice little plaque. Just again, wonderful acknowledgement, the staff, especially during a very challenging year. Thank you to all of the, um, responded and, and make this one of the best districts in the region, if not the country, and things like that. Thank you. Very nice.
With that, we do have need for an executive session, um, for courses of contract negotiations in operation. I need a motion to move into executive session. Mark, second. Michelle, all those in favor? All right, we will move into the session. We don't anticipate any, uh, board business after the executive session. Thank you very much, everybody.